President Byrne.
Here.
Trustee Cook.
Here.
Trustee Forster.
Here.
Trustee Schenk.
Here.
Trustee Markarth.
Here.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Here.
Trustee Takaoka.
Here.
We have a core present. Would everybody please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I'm gonna take it down. That was there for Zoom meeting. Okay, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. There any citizens that wish to address the board tonight on anything other than what's on Committee of the Hall? Because if it's on Committee of the Hall, we'll recognize you there. Are you... I don't... Is these two ladies want to speak?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
You don't have to wait.
Yeah, yeah, no, you can come up right now.
It's not as fun waiting through all these meetings.
Okay, I believe you all received by email our request... Oh, sorry. Tanya Reback.
And where do you live? You got the address?
204 Ashland Court.
Okay.
And Megan Borchers from 270 Danbury Drive.
Yeah, okay. All right, well, welcome.
Thank you.
Yeah.
We are asking for a Wear Orange proclamation for the first weekend in June. The proclamation itself has been sent to all of you, but we're asking for this to basically recognize victims and survivors of gun violence. Some frightening facts: On average, 100 Americans die by gun violence every day. 4.6 million American children live in homes with unsecured guns. In the time from March 2019 to March 2020, the Lake County Sheriff here in Illinois reported a 20% increase in domestic disturbance calls related to... Many of those related to gun violence. And domestic violence victims are five times more likely to be killed when their abuser has a firearm. We are asking for the board to recognize here in Vernon Hills, June 4th, as Wear Orange Day in Vernon Hills. And it has been established all across the nation in various communities. And we're looking to recognize the men, women, and children who've been impacted by gun violence.
Yeah, okay.
Thanks.
Does anybody have an issue with that? I don't think so. So what... Do we have the proclamation tonight?
Yeah, no, Mr. President, if the board approves, we'll have the proclamation drafted for reading and passage at the June 1st board meeting.
Which is perfect timing.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine. You know, I mean, it's a...
We already received a sample proclamation from them via email.
Correct.
Is there anything that we needed to modify or...
I think we're gonna make just a couple modifications so that it fits on one page. Right now, it's a multi-page document.
Fair enough.
So, but the intent will still be there.
Smaller font.
Smaller font.
Whatever you gotta do.
Are you going to, besides the proclamation, a way to communicate this with your group to the village? Having a yea of any kind or...
I don't know specifically, but I'm sure that if we get a yea from you all, that the Moms Demand Action leaders in the area will be putting something together. I know similar proclamations are being proposed in Mundaline and Libertyville.
And numerous ones around the Chicagoland area I saw online there.
Okay. Yes, yep.
And just as a reminder, this was an issue that was very important to Trustee Schultz, and he supported this initiative last year at this time.
Yeah, yeah, fine. We'll see. You can come in on the first and we can, you know, obviously give you some publicity on...
That'd be great.
Yeah, so, okay, all right, well, welcome and...
Absolutely.
You know, goodbye. You don't have to stay...
That was easy.
Thanks for your time.
Well, that's kind of telling. You don't have to stay here for the meeting unless you want to. You know, it's your prerogative. Yeah, sure.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you.
I just want to say something. Tanya Reback, she's... I've known Tanya for like 20 years. Well, Jesus, it's been 15 years. But, you know, she was part of the team that brought Vernon Hills Soccer Club here, part of the team that got the TERF initiative going as well, so, you know, appreciate everything you do as far as, you know, contributing to the community, Tanya.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's good.
Along with her husband as well. Won't forget Andrew.
It's good that you're a parent volunteer. It's not that popular anymore.
Been doing it a long time.
Yeah, that's good, yeah. Okay, well, with that said, you want me to do the proclamation on Rela Trace or no?
You want to do that next?
Well, I... Is somebody here for this?
No.
Well, where did you want me to do it?
It was number two under President's report, but go ahead. I mean, that's fine.
Okay, all right, no, that's fine. We gotta do... Oh, yeah, that's right, Kevin's here. Now he can wait.
He's still forgetting.
Okay. The Village of Vernon Hills is pleased to celebrate the birthday of Ms. Rela Trace. Rela will be 102 years old on May 20th. Rela was born May 20th, 1919, and grew up post-World War I. Rela's father valued education. Rela also wanted to go to college, and her father was supportive of this. Rela also met her husband in college, and upon Rela's graduation, she became a substitute teacher. Rela went on to earn a master's degree at National Teachers College. Rela became a learning disability specialist and worked in Glencoe area schools. Rela's husband wanted to move to California, so for several years, they lived in the Golden State. Rela is now residing at the Victory Center, Vernon Hills, and in a couple of days, staff will be presenting Rela with this proclamation and her birthday cake. So, happy birthday, Rela. Well, in any event. Okay, next is Village Manager's Declaration, 2110.
Mr. President, members of the board, at the last Village Board meeting, President Byrne nominated Kevin Timoney to replace me as the next Village Manager here in Vernon Hills. That recommendation was motioned and seconded and was approved by the entire board. Pursuant to that, the passage of that vote, I was instructed to work with Kevin to prepare an employment agreement with the direction and advice from the board, which we have done. That agreement has been posted online since last week. A copy of it is in your packet tonight, and we are asking for approval and passage of the ordinance which authorizes the mayor to sign the employment agreement with Kevin. And Kevin and his wife are here tonight.
And this is 2021-013?
Correct.
All right, well, you want to vote on that right now?
We can, right?
Absolutely.
Okay, is there a motion to...
Motion to approve.
Is there a second? Motion is second. Roca?
Trustee Markarth?
Aye.
Trustee Forster?
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Aye.
Trustee Cook?
Aye.
Trustee Takaoka?
Aye.
Trustee Schenk?
Aye.
President Byrne?
Aye. Motion carries. All right, do we have all your phone numbers yet? Well, home and cell and... Oh, you're all cell phones. You got... Is your wife's cellphone the same? In case we can't find you.
Don't give it out.
A reasonable request, right?
Keep that one a secret.
All right.
Call him up for a little speech.
Come up and say something to us, Kevin. I mean, not that we haven't heard you before, but, you know.
Well, I'll keep it brief. Just wanted to thank you, President Byrne and Board of Trustees, for this opportunity. I'm just very honored that you've put your trust and faith in me to help lead this village. Feel very fortunate that I'm be joining a great staff that we have here. I've really enjoyed getting to know you guys over the past few weeks. And, yeah, this is a big moment for me, and I'm really honored. I really appreciate it. Thank you very much.
This is a big moment.
Yeah.
Big step up.
And I...
I have to be bragging, but I am.
Thank you.
And what's your wife's name?
Lauren. This is my wife, Lauren.
Yeah.
Again, she's a teacher at District 73 here, so she's the veteran in the family of Vernon Hills, if you will.
Yeah, good.
Well, and I find it interesting that you, even though you were at Libertyville,
Yeah.
you were at Vernon Hills High School the very first year it was open.
Correct.
When it was just all freshmen at Vernon Hills High School, and I find that interesting.
Yep.
But you didn't stay?
The school split, so I had to...
The very first year.
Well, it wasn't his choice.
There wasn't choice.
Very first year, all freshmen went to Vernon Hills High School for the whole district.
But probably during his high school career, it became a choice though, I bet. Within four years?
No, 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 he lived up near Stoughton Park.
Oh, okay, too far away?
Yeah.
Yeah, I was shipped from Peterson Road every day, so that was...
All right.
That was quite the hike.
Yeah, just that one year, they made it totally freshman.
Right, right. This is actually closer. I'll take it.
Did your wife go here?
She's a Mundaline Mustang.
Oh, and what's the grammar school that you go to?
What grammar school? I went to Mechanics Row.
Yeah, okay. Well, Tom's the Mundaline expert, you know.
Right.
Okay, all right. And just for the... Are you gonna take a picture with Kevin right now? Mark, you want to take one?
No, sir, we're gonna do that on July 6th, which would be his first board meeting when he's sworn in.
Because I was just gonna do a comparison, you know, the Ute.
Thanks.
And then we have, you know...
I used to look like that five years ago.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I'm trying about...
Good luck to you.
Yeah, I'm trying about 35 years ago. How old are you?
36.
Yeah, come on. You know, I'm gonna be 72. Cook, you're already 72, right? Yeah, so we've doubled this guy's age.
I'm 33 and a half, just twice.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. All right, well, anyway, welcome and you'll enjoy your stay here, I think, you know. And your wife is already, you know, married to the school district, so that's a good thing, so. All right, well...
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I'm gonna send her home, if that's all right.
Yeah, sure. You gonna stay or...
I'm gonna stay, yes.
So you have two cars?
We do.
Wow, that's great. Wow, that's pretty...
Thank you.
That's pretty nice, you know? Okay. All right, well, all right, that's good. All right, so now we gotta do what? The emergency declaration again?
Yes, sir. This is just a reminder that tonight Mayor Byrne will be signing Declaration Number 21-10, which extends the state of emergency in Vernon Hills, which is continuous along with the state of emergency declared by the governor of the state of Illinois. It also appears that maybe we're coming out of the darkness here, and maybe we won't have to do one of these again.
Yeah.
Maybe only one more.
Yeah, everybody... Does everybody in this room have their shots? Come on, you guys from Texas, come on. Is that a... You're nodding yes? You got cards? You got a card and stuff?
Totally vaccinated, yeah.
I believe you, but, you know, I'm looking at the other guy. I'm looking at Oliver principally, you know. Okay. Yeah, okay.
While we're talking about that, again, Hawthorne, 73 is just an amazing district. This Thursday night, they're doing their vaccination thing at Middle North for, you know, anybody 12 and over in the district who wants to, you know, wants to get vaccinated, and they've put that together real fast, just like they did for getting their teachers vaccinated back in January, so.
Is this Walker?
That's... I think they're paired with Jewel this time.
Jewel Osco.
Yes, Jewel Osco this time, yeah. But Superintendent Henning and Pete's done just an amazing job staying with this.
Yeah. Yep, okay.
Should I make a plug?
You, Dr. wants to say...
Yeah, I was just gonna make a plug for my organization, Pedia Trust, that we're also doing vaccinations for the whole community, anyone 12 and over.
Yeah.
PediaTrust.com.
What would your prediction be, Doc, as far as when they would do the kids six years old?
We don't know. The studies are still ongoing, and we expect some preliminary results in the early fall, so.
Oh, okay.
And then hopefully, once the studies come out, then it'll be very quick to...
Yeah, no kidding.
To get all the parties involved.
Yeah.
To approve it, so.
Yeah.
So hoping by mid-fall to start vaccinating the younger ones.
That'd be wonderful.
Yeah, that would be wonderful.
Okay.
Thank you, Doctor.
Okay. On the vote agenda, is there a motion to approve items A through... Oh. Is there a motion?
So made.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any comments or questions from the board? If not, Roca?
Trustee Forster?
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Aye.
Trustee Schenk?
Aye.
Trustee Cook?
Aye.
Trustee Takaoka?
Aye.
Trustee Markarth?
Aye.
President Byrne?
Aye. Motion carries. Okay. Let's see, unfinished business. Approval and passage of ordinance 2021-086, an ordinance authorizing a redevelopment agreement between the Village of Vernon Hills, Hawthorne LP, Hawthorne SPLLC, Hawthorne CPLLC. Is it the same? No, C instead of an F. Okay, and USF Centennial FA Hawthorne Owner LLC for redevelopment of the Hawthorne Mall comprising a part of the Hawthorne Mall TIFF District of the Village of Vernon Hills, Lake County, Illinois. You want... The manager, Flush Hour, wants to take this one.
I'm just gonna give a brief, just a brief overview. At the April 7th, 2021 Village Board meeting on the Committee of the Hall, members of Centennial or representatives Centennial, representatives of Kane McKenna, our financial accountants, and staff did a PowerPoint presentation for the board. And just by way of overview, description of this development property is a three-phased project. Phase one will consist of about 83,000 square feet of commercial space with 313 residential units. Phase two is a residential building only, which is another 249 units plus a 460-stall parking garage. Phase three involves the demolition, renovation, and rehabilitation of the Carson Store. And just away as a reminder, the TIFF increment incentive amounts to $43 million in total TIFF notes. Phase one is worth $32,250. Phase two has no incentive tied to it. Phase three is $10,750,000. As I said before, we had representatives from Kane McKenna here to discuss all the financial details last night. And present with us tonight are the architects of the project. Representatives from Centennial, Stephen Levine, Levin, I'm sorry, Oliver Robinson, John Michelle, Mike Laubie, and their attorney, Hal Frank, are here to put an exclamation point on this request.
What about Attorney Axelrod?
I believe he's here for another project.
Oh, are you? Okay. Everly?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. All right, well...
It's enough attorneys.
Yeah, yeah, you know, just don't say pro bono. Okay. All right, so is there a motion to approve?
So made.
Is there a second? Mark, are you the second?
Second.
Okay. Comments or questions? This is, you know, a historic evening as far as all of us go to, you know, actually revitalizing the mall. And it's extremely... It's not just important to the village, and it is, don't get me wrong, but it's important to the whole area, in my opinion. And it's also very important to... I brought it up today at a GLMV, you know, meet the mayors, germane to the fact that you guys, you know, the taxes that will eventually be generated out of here is good for Hawthorne District 73, but Hawthorne District 73 takes in, you know, I don't know, six, seven towns? Eight towns? You're... How many towns?
Six, I don't know, six, I think.
Yeah, and, you know, there's like 300 kids come from, I mean, 1,100 kids come from Mundaline. 300, you know, come from Libertyville. I think we even have Meadowway in there, don't we?
Yes, yes.
And then Indian Creek, and then, of course, you know, Vernon Hills, so. Anyway, I'm just saying, you know, if we could help and participate with anybody, it's with you guys that own that property. And I've been saying that for years, that if we ever had to come to this, and we have. So I'm very happy about having you gentlemen as a partner. That's, you know, it's the Centennial Group, so. Anyway.
Did they want to...
You want to say... Come on out, guys, you know, yeah, you could...
I didn't fly up here to sit down.
No, no, I don't. No, you're more than welcome, Steve.
Well...
And you're not Levine, right?
I'm not, I'm not.
Bro, that guy is a pretty good basketball player on our team.
But, you know, I mean, it's okay. As long as we get the approval, Levine is, you can say Levine. I wasn't gonna correct you.
No, we're...
I wasn't gonna correct you. But I would like to say, it is a historic evening for us as well. And President Byrne and the Village Board, I can't thank you enough for the effort you've put forth, the collaboration that you have worked with us in order to get here tonight. I can honestly say, and I mean this, I mean, we have worked with many communities, and we are working with many communities, and at the end of the day, this Village Board and this community has been at the top of the list of anything and everything that has been brought to the table in order to have this evening tonight. And I can assure you, and I promise you, that with your support and with what we are committed to do, that we will make you proud. And this will be a project that I believe that around, in America, that people will look at what has been done at Hawthorne, in Vernon Hills, as one of the best projects in America. I believe that in my heart of hearts, and it wouldn't be possible without your work with us to get to this point, to allow us to do what we really want to do. And it is critically important that it is the community's project, and it has to be something that the community embraces, and that's important to us. And I just can't thank you enough, and I wanted to be here to personally thank you for everything that you've done through these years to get us here. And I am gonna... I cannot pick this up. I actually can't even move this, but... But this, yeah, I mean, I'm not quite, I'm not quite to your age, but I'm right, I'm right behind you.
Hey, you look a lot better now.
I've got good genes.
Hey, you're good, you're doing okay.
My mom is close to Rela's. She's right behind Rela.
No kidding, oh, yeah.
So, this is off of the Sears Building.
Yeah.
So, President Byrne, this is, both of these things are for you. This is to reflect the last 40 years of what this project meant to the community of Vernon Hills. And this shovel, which I hope will be worth something one day. I signed it. Oliver signed it, and John Michelle signed it. So far, our signatures mean nothing, but hopefully one day, they will mean something. This shovel represents the next 40 years of what this project will be for Vernon Hills. So, these are for you. Thank you again very, very much. We will make you proud.
Steve, you're more than welcome, and obviously, you have all the support of this board and also staff. And now, working with staff is critical, you know.
Yeah, well, look, look.
And they've known what they need to do for years, not, you know, whether it's you or anybody else, but would you, your priority.
Well, we're...
You're fast-tracked.
We started construction, this first phase, $120 million. We want to go as fast as we can. We were out there today with USA, our partner, and looking at what's phase two, what's phase three, what's phase four, everything that we want to do, and we're gonna be around a while. So we appreciate it, and thank you all so much.
Yeah, you know, also, I mean, you think there's gonna be some relief six months, a year from now on the building material prices? Because it's crazy.
I hope so. I hope so, because it's, obviously, it's been very impactful.
Yeah, no kidding.
It's significantly changing the pricing. We don't want to slow down, so we're gonna, we're gonna, we're planning on breaking ground in a few weeks.
Yeah, sure.
But there's no question that this isn't sustainable if the prices continue to go the way that they are. But hopefully, that won't be the case, and we're gonna be able to stay on the pace that we want to stay on.
Yeah, okay. And, yeah, obviously, we've dealt extensively with the Focus Development Company.
Yeah.
And Tim Anderson, and I think there's a real good working relationship.
Yeah, they...
With his people and our staff.
Yeah, and we picked them largely for that reason. They, you know, we wanted to bring someone here that the Village Board was, the Village staff, and everyone's used to working with, and had the credibility to deliver the project that we want, and they've been great for us to work with.
Good.
So, thank you again. Very much appreciate it.
The other guys want to say anything, or...
Thank you.
The main man is enough?
I think it's enough. No, seriously, I want to just thank you, Roger Byrne, and specifically the staff that we've been dealing with. Jim Farolo, the Village Attorney, has been an incredible advocate for the village, but also a partner, you know, on the other side of that. Mark, it's been an honor to work with you. It's sort of symbolic, I don't know if symbolic is the right word, but bittersweet that, you know, we're watching your replacement come in on this historic evening, and you've been really fantastic guide and a negotiator against and for us, so really appreciate it of you. John, Mike, Dave, all of you guys have been so professional to work with, helpful and straightforward. And it's really, really important. And great, great to work with. The village is great. We're really appreciative, so thank you.
Well, you know, and we, you know, I'll go, I'll say it, and I'm sure other members of the board will say, you know, we're pro-development. We have been for decades. You know what I mean? So that, you just gotta drive around town, you know, so. Business parks and retail and nice mix of residential and such, but it's, yeah, it's a good, very, very good...
Truly, big thanks to the staff. Really, really great job from everybody, and appreciative, so thank you.
Even the, you know, the, you know, the guys that only been here three, four years.
Mark?
You know, well, Mark and Chad, you know. I mean, no, they were both sworn, you know, Chad was the deputy chief here for years, and Mark was the chief of police, so they came to all the meetings, so.
Well, thank you all.
Some of this had to rub off on you guys, right?
Thank you.
You know, okay, thank you. And then, okay, Mike.
I just want to say, I'm new, it's only my second meeting up here, but I used to be on that side a lot. And I was at the meeting when you first presented. How long ago is that?
April 16th, 2019.
2019. Whole different world back then, right? And you said something tonight that you also said at that meeting. I actually wrote it down, because I was gonna hold you to it, because I was an advocate for the school districts, and it was, it's a community project. I mean, that's pretty much what drives everything, but all of us working together for our community. So I was glad to hear you say that, but I just want to thank you for the concessions that you did make for the District 73. We know, we know you don't have to do that with the TIFF, but you guys did. And then you guys realize how sensitive the district... And then you guys realized how sensitive, sensitive the district, school district, was to our community, so I want to thank you, and I'm sure many others would thank you too. So, we're looking forward to a great project.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Yeah. Okay, any other comments or from the board? We already voted on it, right?
No, you have a motion and a second.
There were too many sideburns. Okay, well, let's vote. Roca?
Trustee Cook?
Aye.
Trustee Takaka?
Aye.
Trustee Uppenheim?
Aye.
Trustee Markwart?
Aye.
Trustee Forster?
Aye.
Trustee Schenk?
Aye.
President Byrne?
Aye, motion carries. You know, when did you guys buy?
December 2015. It's been five and a half years.
Yeah, and I'm trying to think when we, we actually, you know, met for the first time, had to be before 2019.
It was 2017.
Yeah.
It was fairly early on in the process. It was in 2017.
Yeah. Well, four, only four years, huh?
Yeah, well, I'm going in dog years, so it's, it's.
Yeah, that's a good way of putting it. All right, gentlemen, are you sticking around, or you want to go? I don't care.
We're getting out of here as fast as we can.
Yeah, how's, how's Harry's looking?
Very good. We're getting close.
I just heard.
We're getting close.
Okay.
We're getting close.
Thank you again.
All right, guys, you guys fly back tonight or tomorrow?
First thing in the morning. We have a meeting with Focus Atlantic, and then we're going back.
Yeah, are you staying where, somewhere around in Byer?
Kind of closer. We got a meeting in the morning, but if we're a different zip code, you can't change your mind, is what we heard the Illinois law was, so.
We have to be out of the bylaw.
Guys, you're not dealing with straight people. This is like, you know, Jerry Maguire line with the father and, and the kid, you know, this handshake is like oak. Something that I probably misquoted.
Thank you all.
Okay.
Thank you.
Bye, thank you.
Okay. Nice, huh? Okay, new business? Mike Gackinson, you want to take this? This is outdoor market, so on and so forth?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Although this is a different location, this is similar to what the board approved last year for an outdoor market at Hawthorne Mall. For this year, the event will be staged on the parking lot adjacent to Townline Road, generally in front of Macy's. It's shown in red on the screen in front of you. The artisans' market would be open every Friday from June 4th to October 15th, and the hours of operation would be 3:30 to 7:00 P.M. Everyone involved would be required to follow health protocols as provided in the Restore Illinois Guidelines specific to the bridge phase for retail establishment, or the current standing order from the Governor's Office, whichever is applicable. Individual vendors serving food would be required to obtain a license from the Lake County Health Department. And then finally, there would be A-frame signs that would be placed along Ring Road that would direct customers to the market. So, if the board feels the artisans' market is appropriate, a motion approving the resolution attached to your packet is recommended, subject to the conditions that are contained within that resolution. And a representative of the artisans' market is here to answer any questions that you may have.
Good evening.
Good evening. And who, what's your name, please?
My name is Marion Wood. I am currently a shop owner within Hawthorne Mall, and we were, we participated last, last year in the artisans' market, which is how we kind of got with the mall. And for all intents and purposes, we are hoping to basically just continue it on to the outside over the summer with the goal.
What's the name of your business?
My business is Middleton's Preserves. Our storefront is Market at the Mall. We have 10 separate vendors currently, and we also have, I've got seven vendors confirmed with approval as of right now, with about 14 others pending, which puts us into a waiting list. Our goal for this event is not just a one-year. We're looking to make it a true community event, a destination, partnering more with Hawthorne Mall, working very closely with Sarah Phelps, trying to make it something that the community wants to be. I don't know if any of you have been to the Highwood Market at all?
Yeah, I've been to Highwood.
So that's.
On a Saturday or Sunday afternoon?
Wednesday evenings?
No.
No? So, there, they started very similar to a farmer's market, artisans' market, and they've expanded it into almost an acre of food trucks, different vendors, different artisans. That's what we're looking to do. We're looking to make this the biggest market in Lake County.
They have bands, too.
They do, yes. So, some of the things that we are looking at is getting some of the local music schools involved, a lot of the local restaurants involved. With any of that, obviously, they would have to follow health code, get their licensing through the Lake County Health Department, as well as the requirement of to-go only, so that we are following the farmer market guidelines, even though it's not a true farmer's market, we do want to still follow those guidelines. They're put in place for our safety.
All right.
Can I ask?
Any other questions from the board?
Yeah, can I ask, I see the directional arrows, is that still part of the bridge requirements to have directional flow of the traffic for pedestrians?
Actually, it goes beyond the bridge phase. At the time of the application, we were still in Phase Four. So the plan that's before you shows one entrance, one exit, so they can count the number of people going to the event and leaving the event, so they can control the number of people based on Phase Four guidelines. Since the writing of the report and the submission of the application, the, the governor changed to the bridge phase, so they actually don't have to go that far, even though it's shown that way on the site plan.
So, do we want to still hold them to that, then, or do, or can we?
We, we don't have to hold them to that, we could just hold them to the Phase Four guidelines, or the standing order from the Governor's Office, whichever is applicable. That's what I would recommend.
I'd hate to force everyone to follow a directional path just in this farmer's market if they don't have to do it anywhere else in the community, unless you disagree with that for any reason.
Yeah.
Seems kind of silly to.
So we could, you could, you could make your motion to approve in accordance with the resolution attached to the packet, except that the directional path as shown on the site plan is not required unless.
Unless required by the state.
Phase is, falls back to Phase Four, so that could be an amended motion that would accomplish that.
Okay, so made.
Here's a motion, a second. Is there any other comments or questions? Okay, Roca?
Trustee Schenk?
Aye.
Trustee Markwart?
Aye.
Trustee Forster?
Aye.
Trustee Cook?
Aye.
Trustee Uppenheim?
Aye.
Trustee Takaka?
Aye.
President Byrne?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much, everyone, for your time. You guys have a wonderful evening, I appreciate it.
Yeah, you too. All right. Okay. Any other new business or communications that come before the board? If not, there's, there's a motion to adjourn.
Just a, a note, we do have a very brief executive session to discuss land acquisition under Section 2C5, approval of previous minutes under Section 2C21, and personnel under Section 2C1 of the Illinois Opened Meetings Act.
And that'll be after committee of the whole, and we won't come back out and conduct any business.
No, sir.
We can make that motion at, at the end of the committee of the whole. You can just adjourn the regular meeting now.
Yeah. Well, I'm going to adjourn this meeting.
Right.
Okay. All right, so is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion to second. Can we do an aye on this one?
Yes, you can, because we're, we're together, we're not virtual any longer, so, yes, you can.
A voice vote.
All in favor.
All in favor to adjourn signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is there any nays? Oh, the ayes have.
We're back.
Motion, motion carries, the board meeting's adjourned. Okay, next is Committee of the Whole. All right, I'd like to call a committee of the whole meeting to order approval, the first item is approve of the committee of the whole meeting minutes of May 4th, 2021.
Motion to approve?
There's a second?
Second.
Any comments, questions, deletions, or corrections? If not, Roca?
Trustee Cook?
Aye.
Trustee Takaka?
Aye.
Trustee Schenk?
Aye.
Trustee Forster?
Aye.
Trustee Markwart?
Aye.
Trustee Uppenheim?
Aye.
President Byrne?
Aye. Say motion carries. All right, Master Flex is, yeah, okay. Come hither.
Mr. Mayor, Antilia is going to present their concept presentation.
Yeah.
And I think, as the board knows, they've been located at the former Cole Palmer site since the mid-1990s. It's now known as, known as Antilia Scientific. Their plan is to expand the campus to the south by constructing a new building. That building will house a division of their company known as Master Flex, and the petitioner will go into the details of what Master Flex is all about. It's actually quite interesting. I should note that, from staff's perspective, we're still working out some issues related to the ingress egress on Lakeview Parkway. We think we can solve those issues during the technical review process, but that's still outstanding, so I wanted to advise the board of that. So, with that, I'll let the petitioner make their concept presentation, and at the end, if the board thinks it's appropriate, then the petition should be forwarded to the technical review step, then they will go before the Planning and Zoning Commission for a public hearing, then back to the Village Board for final consideration. And again, with that, I'll throw it to the petition for their presentation.
And this is, what, the 12 acres, 12 roughly?
It's 13.
Oh, thank.
Total of 33.
What are they, they own total there? 30?
33.
Okay, but, okay, so 20s are.
I'll show you.
Is 20 already?
13's already developed.
Oh, 13, okay.
So, hello.
It's fine, it's been there a long time.
Yes, sir, mayor, trustees, Mark, Jim, Mike, Dave, really glad to be back. I'm Steve Elrod. I love bringing you great projects, and this is yet another great one. I, I think you'll agree, there's very little relief that's required. We're going through your development concept plan, think you're going to like this one. I'm representing Antilia Scientific, as, as Mike indicated, they used to be Cole Palmer. The name was, Antilia was launched under its current corporate structure just this past February, in February of 2021. You'll hear more about that, but they provide bioprocessing solutions. On the screen right now, you can see the building that they currently are in at 625 Bunker. On this screen, you can see where they plan to expand. The goal is to bring the corporate headquarters of, of Master Flex to the village of Vernon Hills. And that, that's a cool thing. They're going to consolidate, have a beautiful corporate campus on what is currently vacant property. You can see on this slide, the, the, the property is, is vacant right now. This is in the Continental Office Park. As you know, I'm familiar with that park, having just brought you the Everly, and, and we're familiar with what needs to be done. Unlike the Everly, very little needs to be done. This is a use that is contemplated in this park, and we're not taking a movie theater and turning it into residential. Instead, we're using it for what was initially designed, mayor.
Hold on one second, this is, do we still have the Regional Plan Unit Development Ordinance in place?
We sure do, that's Ordinance 639.
And it should streamline this whole process.
Well, it, it, yeah, it's a regional plan unit development, and it does set forth all the requirements, and does help streamline the process, that's correct.
Yeah, we just haven't used it in a while.
No, well, you, we, we went through it with, with the Everly, and as you know, when I first brought you CDW, we were familiar with Ordinance 639 then. And so, yes, we're, we're very familiar with it, we've, we've reviewed it. We don't believe that, I mean, we'll certainly learn more when we go through technical review, but we don't believe we're going to need to make any major changes to that ordinance. We'll see as we work with your staff, and we're delighted to work with your staff as we go through it. We're here for development concept, but more for you to learn a little bit about, about Antilia. So I, I want to introduce the team of people that, that we have here. We, we have a full presentation. If you want to just hear about the project and let your plan commission get into the details, we're also very open for that. I, I do want, though, to, you just, to meet. Mike Whitaker and Mike Sesterhen from, from, from Antilia. I will have them both come up and tell you a little bit about their, the proposal.
Are these guys from?
They're right here in Vernon Hills.
Are they from Europe? Any of these people?
From Europe.
Well, didn't Cole Palmer one time sell to whoever?
Absolutely.
Who did, I mean, who did, who owned the?
They sell all over the world, they're global and.
No, 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 I'm talking, was it ever, you know, any ownership with, with, you know, a European country at one time?
You know what, you might be thinking of when we were owned by Thermo Fisher Scientific, which was.
Oh, okay.
That was back in 2000, but since then, 2014, we were sold to GT.
Yeah, but I mean, where was their, you know, main head?
Thermo Fisher is U.S., yeah. Yeah, but you know, they operated worldwide, so maybe that's where you're coming from. We're global now, though.
Yeah, great.
So, you know, what we wanted to do is, we want to talk a little bit about Antilia, and like it was presented, we were originally Cole Palmer at 625 Bunker. And, you know, I got a fancy timeline up here, but what I really want to show is, you know, we started in 1955. But I want you to look at like 2014 and on, just the expansion. We've been expanding into the life science, into the bioprocessing, tenfold. And with that said, we're finding ourselves having to build our corporate headquarters. And we wanted to pick Vernon Hills because that's where our life science headquarters is at.
Well, the 2014 group was, Browner was pilot partner, right?
That's right, he's DR, in the, he's DR.
Yeah, 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 okay.
So, as we move through this, you can see we're picking up many different organizations that are based in life science and bioprocessing. Next slide, please. So, a little, we, we put this slide together because it can be complex to figure this all out, right? But we've got really two divisions of our business. We've got the bioprocessing side, and that's really the side we're talking about today. 625 Bunker is currently our headquarters for the life science, and that's what's sitting there now. And that covers all of the brands that you see below. We've got about 1,000 employees working in that particular group, we've got about 250 in Vernon Hills now, and we work with so many different products found in research and science and education and things of that nature. The bioprocessing site is currently located in Barrington, Illinois, where we have a production plant that produces these items here. These are high-tech, software-driven peristaltic pumps, and it's primarily used in transferring fluid in very small quantities or very precise quantities. It uses an activity called peristaltic action, and the purpose of that is to move the fluid without damaging it. Where you find this is in pharmaceuticals, food and things of this nature, where you don't want to damage the soft, you know, the solutions. As you can imagine, we're extremely busy now with COVID being what it is. We've got a lot of activity with Pfizer, all of the large organizations out there that are producing vaccines. What a lot of people don't realize, though, is while all of these companies have shifted to produce vaccines, the rest of the world still needs its medicines and things, you know, the insulin and all that stuff. So what we would like to do is, we're, we're looking at building our Master Flex headquarters on that property that you spoke, so we can consolidate the Antilia family into that corporate so we can consolidate the Antilia family into that corporate park where we've got the two divisions. I can go into many different things about our products. I could talk about how many employees we have and what we're looking to do, but that, that's primarily the, the main piece. Any, any questions or?
Maybe the doctors got some questions on this one.
Are you familiar with our products? Have you heard from them in the past?
No, not. I've probably seen them and didn't realize they were your products over, over the years, but.
And it's one of those companies to, to join in is like, you know, Mike and I have both been with the company many years. I've been there twenty-two years and, and Mike's similar. So, it's just one of those good family companies that has developed so fast in these product lines, and with the life sciences and biosciences industry, it's growing so good, and then we're just taking off.
Yeah.
It's great.
Yeah, we plan to move the seventy jobs from Barrington, Illinois, which are the high-tech production jobs, into Vernon Hills.
So, this is a production facility or a distribution?
This would be light manufacturing. Yeah, well, we'll have our engineers and our software engineers and.
Are you twenty-four hours manufacturing?
Oh, no, no, we're in eight hour.
So, what is, what is that eight hour? Because how many employees do you have coming in and out of there on those shifts?
It's a normal shift, so we'd start about seven probably and about six. It'd be about seventy employees. Yeah.
Well, the high school's right there and they get out.
That's a good point.
Well, they move pretty quick.
Yeah, our employees move pretty quick, too. So, if you'd like.
We, Mayor, we, we have with us Kim Lee Horn, our civil engineers. We have Harris Architects. Our architect to show you, we're happy to make that, we're taking this seriously, even though there's little relief that's requested. We want to know that, well, I know how Vernon Hills operates, and we, we want to make sure that we respect your process. If you'd like a full presentation, we're happy to give it, or we can give it to your plan commission, which would be.
Yeah, that's fine with me. You know, I mean.
Yeah, because the detail will be in some of the things like the traffic flow and that, that Mike's already talked about, and that would be.
That's right, trust me.
Yeah.
And, and, and we're working with them to work out details, access. I think our access is not going to affect the high school because we're exiting by CDW. But, you know, we're, we're paying attention to all the, all of those issues. We're paying attention to emissions issues, everything that, that I, I think would be important to the village. So.
All we're really doing tonight is.
Yeah, it's just a concept presentation, so general consensus from the board to go ahead and forward this to the technical review step is really all we're looking forward to.
And, and P and G and.
Correct.
Yeah, that's, it's, yeah, that's fine. I mean, you know.
Have they shown us the building?
We don't even have to give you the speech, do we?
We, we can show you the building.
He's heard it. I think Steve's heard the speech many times.
No, I, yeah, believe me, this will get done.
Go one more to the.
There you go. It's a little blown up.
More. There, there's the, that's, that's the, I mean, it's, it fits right into this office park. We'll work with the plan commission. Believe me, I, I know your architects on the plan commission, and I know what they will be looking for. We, so, we do appreciate moving past this stage. I have bragged to the, to Antilia about how great your staff is. They are going to be looking for, to, to move through this process.
Sure.
Quickly, particularly as, as the pandemic wraps up and they're, they're producing important equipment. So, we're looking for your help.
Who's the general endist? Do you have one yet? The general contractor?
Not yet.
Yeah, you haven't even gone out to, to bids yet?
Not yet.
The process of that.
You know, yeah.
Tomorrow will be before your staff, though.
That's fine. You know, that's fine.
Are you bringing the coffee?
Yeah.
Okay, well, you know, welcome and get moving. It's fine with us.
Can we just get a general consensus to call the board regarding the approval? Absolutely.
Nancy?
Yeah.
Doc?
Sure.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
A little steam ahead.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you. It's a pleasure to meet all of you. Look forward to it.
Yeah, looking forward to working with you. You guys publicly trained?
No.
Because they were owned by Fisher, Thermo Fisher.
Oh, okay. All right, guys.
Glad to be back in Vernon Hills. Thank you all and to be your president.
And I, I didn't call you David Axelrod.
It was a compliment. I'll take it. It's better than what you've called me at some of the past meetings, so.
Yeah, I don't think, though, it's half hell Frank's, you know, hell Frank thing.
During Melody Farms, I was called a lot of different things.
Yeah, it's a pleasure to be back.
I'll take any name. Bye, all.
Thank you. Take care. All right, that's about it, right? Got a little closed session. Do we might just stay here and turn the mics off?
We can, we can actually leave the mics on, the, the.
Yeah, well, doesn't it go out into the?
We just have to, the speaker's off in the hallway. We just have to make sure everybody's gone.
Oh, okay.
Can we make that motion, Mr. President? Motion to go into closed session to discuss land acquisition, personnel and review of minutes, and to adjourn the cow, as we will not be coming out after closed session.
Motion to adjourn plus what he said.
I'll second that. Same thing.
Okay.
And that is a roll.
Should we do a voice vote on it?
No, that's, when you go into executive session, that's always a roll call.
Okay, roll call.
Trustee Takaka?
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Aye.
Trustee Cook?
Aye.
Trustee Forster?
Aye.
Trustee Markwart?
Aye.
Trustee Schenk?
Aye.
President Byrne?
Aye. Motion carries. We are now in closed session.
Yeah.